I'm just gonna bring that up.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's June 7, 2022 city council meeting. I'd also like to ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to call on Councilmember Wall for tonight's invocation.
Pray with me. Loving Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessings and help as we are gathered together. Bless each person present. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. We pray that this meeting is successful, productive, and blessed. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Give us wisdom concerning the issues that we face. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that you would challenge each other to reach higher and farther, to be the best that we can be. Lord, we give you the glory for what we accomplish. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation and a proclamation. At this time, we're going to have a presentation or hear from the Military Pine Historic Preservation Award. We'd like to recognize Planning Director Jamie Lawson and Historic Preservation Commission Chair James Ullis.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm here tonight to introduce James Ullis. He is the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. He's going to present the two Military Pine Award recipients. There are awards. I've got plaques here as well. While he's speaking, I'm just gonna flip through some photos of the projects, so.
Sure. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, council members. As Jamie says, my name is James Ullis. I'm the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. And each year, the Burlington Historic Preservation Commission recognizes historic properties which have been restored in an exemplary manner. The award is named in memory of Jay "Mintry" Pine, a former member of the commission who was a pioneer in Burlington's early preservation efforts by beginning a campaign in 1966 to save the Globe Lanterns on Fountain Place. He also served as the Fountain Place Lamp Lighter for over 20 years. This year, we're honoring two properties. The first property is 404 South Spring Street, which is the property of Casey and Emily Lewis. And the second property is the Old Red Cross Building with Catherine Hartwell. And if I pronounce this name, I apologize.
Keandry?
Keandry.
Kendy.
Kendy.
He's here. He can help you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry if I pronounce names. I know Jamie's gonna show you some photos. That's the, what's the Carolina Sundry's, but that's 404 South Spring Street. As you can tell, they really renovated it.
Yeah, and that's the first project. And then the second project, this is the Red Door Apartments on West Davis.
And I will say, I think that's the best I've ever seen that building. Look, they did a really good job with it.
Yeah, so that's the before, and then these are some of the changes.
More commonly known as the Red Cross Building.
Yeah. The Old Red Cross.
What's in there now?
Red House. That was Red House.
Well, Red House.
So both award recipients are here tonight. I don't know if Casey and Emily want to come up and say a little something about your efforts. And then we can present you with the plaque after you.
Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. We very much appreciate this award and you guys taking the time to recognize this. And we just want to say thank you. This has been a long road, and we hope that this will be something that will bless our community in some form or fashion moving forward. And thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sure this feels bittersweet to the Louis's.
Yes.
It is.
I can't help feeling just really, really sorry that this didn't work out after all of your efforts. I know many of us tried to support you, and I hope it doesn't discourage you going forward.
We appreciate all the support we did receive from the community on Carolina Sundry. But we do hope that whoever we rent the space to moving forward is going to be supported by the community as well.
Thank you for your effort. I know how this feels, actually.
Okay, and then the other recipients. I'm not sure who would like to come up. Okay. And so you're also welcome to talk about your preservation efforts and anything else you'd like to say.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I, this is a big honor for us. And I'm so glad to see that most of you that approved this project are still sitting on the desk. We promised that we were going to deliver. And I, and we also promised that we were going to make you proud. I, I hope we've delivered on this project. And it's a big honor. It was teamwork. Catherine and even Gary, they, I mean, it's a family. When we come, we come as a family. And we've embraced Burlington as a city. And I think this is just the beginning for us. We love Burlington. We think it's a great town with super potential. And in the Great Book, they say, a prophet is never recognized in his home. And at times, some of the Burlingtonians, I think that's what people in Burlington are called, probably don't recognize the beauty in Burlington. It's a great town, great city. And one project at a time, it just takes one, and then we do another one and another one. And before we know it, I mean, it's already a great city. It's a beautiful city. And, you know, again, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next item is recognition of National Preservation Month, which was actually in May of this year. But we wanted to tie the reading of the proclamation with the Military Pine Evening. So at this time, we'll invite faith grant and preservation Burlington representatives. And I'll read the proclamation and then ask them to say a few words. So I read the proclamation. The City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation recognizes National Preservation Month, May 2022. Whereas there are more than 3,000 historic properties and districts around the state of North Carolina that are listed in the National Register of Historic Places, including thousands of historic homes. And whereas since 1976, historic preservation incentives have fostered more than $3.4 billion in private investment in North Carolina to preserve and restore the state's National Register listed historic properties. And whereas historic preservation projects create jobs for North Carolinians in the areas of heritage tourism, construction, building materials, landscaping, and architecture with the goal of stabilizing local property values and tax bases and giving communities attractive, unique places to live, work, and enjoy life. And whereas historic preservation promotes affordable, sustainable, and comfortable housing in older, established neighborhoods and attract tourist dollars to our community. And whereas historic preservation serves to promote in-field development in the city, resulting in more efficient utilization of existing city resources, including water and sewer lines and roads, and reduce suburban sprawl. And whereas historical preservation and adaptive reuse contributes to stronger, safer neighborhoods, economic development, aesthetic beauty, and community pride. Our historic properties are part of the fabric of our local culture and create a sense of place. Our communities become more attractive, safer, more engaged, enjoyable places to live and work when preservation is emphasized. And whereas Preservation Burlington is a nonprofit organization created in October 2016 from a concern about the demolition of local historic properties. Through preservation, education, and involvement, Preservation Burlington seeks to protect and celebrate the architectural and historical heritage of Burlington and the surrounding area. By fostering an appreciation of our historic properties within the community, Preservation Burlington aims to promote interest in and good stewardship of our local historic treasures. And whereas people saving places is the theme for National Preservation Month 2022, celebrating the historic place savers that devote their time, energy, and money into protecting these historical properties. Now therefore, I'm Mayor Jim Butler and the Burlington City Council do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as National Preservation Month in the City of Burlington. Congratulations.
One, two, three.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the proclamation. This is a special time for Preservation Burlington. We just awarded $10,000 in homeowner grants to four different properties within our two local historic districts in Gwinco and in West Davis Street. So these are all exterior projects, so the community can appreciate the efforts being put in by our local residents. So we really appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate everyone this evening. Thanks so much. Our next item is Code of Ethics: Disclosing Conflicts of Interest. We'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's items.
None. I think our next item is the approval of minutes. May 2, 2022 work session, May 3, 2022 city council meeting, and May 17, 2022 city council meeting. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think our next item is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is the consent agenda, I think.
Yes, I'd like to ask that Item B be removed from the consent agenda and added to new business, please.
So we'll add that to new business. Do we need to do a motion, a motion on that, David?
No, y'all, y'all agree to it.
Okay.
Everybody good.
Okay. So our next item is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to adopt an ordinance amending City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 2, Fire Prevention Code, revising Section 12-25. And Item B will be removed. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is a public hearing. Public hearing has been set to consider adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget ordinance and the adoption of the Community Development Budget Ordinance. At this time, we'll recognize City Manager David Chee.
Good evening, Mayor, council, everyone. I'm gonna give some brief comments about, and some highlights, from the 2023 proposed budget. I'd like to start with the general fund. I'm just gonna give you some highlights from the revenues as well as the spending side. The budget is balanced just a little bit under $69.3 million. $31.9 million of that is property tax. We'll be able to bring that much property tax in without a property tax rate increase because our tax base is growing at 3.5%. Very strong year for the tax base. Also, sales tax is coming in very strong. It'll support our budget with $18.2 million. And that's actually 26% over last year's budget. Permits and fees. You'll recall that the council back in January raised the recycling fee from $2.29 to $6.90. That was to raise about $1 million to cover a recycling contract cost increase. We also eliminated some fees. A lot of people out there were very disappointed when we eliminated the fire inspection fees. So, and we actually, a third of the businesses were charged those fees this year, and we will reimburse those businesses, to be fair. On the spending side, retaining and recruiting employees has become a big issue for almost every government, business, and commercial entity. So personnel pay increases will increase the budget by $4.3 million. New positions, about $400,000, maybe a little bit more than that. And the related benefit cost increases were $492,000. Recycling costs I mentioned earlier, that's going up by $1.1 million. I will note that I think it's the first increase in that $2.29 rate in over 10 years. So you've held the line. I would say you've, you've been holding the line on that very well compared to most cities around, surrounding us.
It was a 10-year contract.
Yeah, yeah. It was.
Then they tried to get out of, yeah.
Yeah.
Properly.
Yeah. It was a very sweet deal for the residents of the city. So, because everyone, all the other cities are paying more like $6.90 the last 10 years. Operations, fuel, service, utilities, inflationary increases. Everybody's aware of the gas prices and how that rolls over into service contracts and everything else. So that's gonna cost about $817,000 in new costs. And then capital outlay, we've got about $1.6 million in projects we're gonna pay cash for, and we're gonna finance $2.2 million. We've discussed those, many of those projects along the way with Budget Committee and with you. So I'm not gonna talk much into the details. If you have questions, ask our Finance Officer Peggy Reese. Here's just the makeup of the budget. I always like to note this. The top three revenues in our budget make up 83% of our budget. Property tax, sales tax, permits and fees. And then the top five departments make up 76% of the general fund. Police, public works, fire, recreation, and debt payments. So I've always think that's interesting, that you can break down a budget that clearly with, you know, just a few really services that we provide. Not that all the other services, which account for $16.8 million, are not important, but just trying to simplify the budget for the public as well as everyone else. Here's spending by departments. There are those top five departments. They total $52.4 million out of that $69.3 million. Please interrupt me if you have questions or want to discuss any of this. I always like to do a little bit of an analysis on property taxes because that's the biggest highlight of every budget I've ever done every year. And there, you see our tax base of almost $5,196 million grew to $5,382 million. It's about $185 million increase. That's the 3.5% increase I mentioned earlier. Our collection rate is, we're projecting it to go up slightly by 0.3%. There you see the tax rate is going up zero. And so producing about $1.2 million more dollars in property tax. New positions in recreation and parks, human resources, police, and finance. Not a lot of new positions this year at all, really. I think the total of that's $580,000, including benefits. Some of these positions are brand-new positions. The Assistant Arborist, HR Technician, the HR Generalist, I think I should have had in there. And some are from freezing positions this coming year in the Police Department or unfreezing a position during this year, the Budget Manager. So not a lot of new money is going toward new positions, really. Switching over to our largest enterprise fund, Water Resources, $31.9 million. You can see the majority of our revenue comes from water and sewer rents. And then the majority of our spending on water and sewer and shared resources. This is a typical utility bill, what it's gonna look like this coming year. This is for someone that uses 2,500 gallons a month. And the items highlighted in green are what's changing. You can see the water rate is being proposed, is going up 2% as well as the sewer rate. So you can see it's a 23 cent increase and a 25 cent increase for a customer using 2,500 gallons. Stormwater fee is staying the same. Solid waste fee is staying the same, and there, the recycling fee shows up on everyone's water bill. So you can see overall, this person's water bill is gonna go up by $5.09 a month, which is about 17 cents per day. I always like to remind or give you some perspective about our city's rates. And if you'll, you'll look at this, this is a site that the School of Government, along with some other folks, put together to compare utility rates across North Carolina. This comparison is on a person that uses 5,000 gallons. It compares Burlington's rates to all the water systems within 50 miles of us. And this includes the 2% rate increase that we're proposing this year. And I've circled those key items in red. You see the 5,000 gallons right here within 50 miles, and I've raised it by 2%. And what I want you to notice is the bill comparison. This is a water bill at 5,000 gallons. The median for that, all the water systems within 50 miles is $77. Burlington's shows up at $48.20. The minimum of that, of all those cities, is $47.25. We're providing a great value to our citizens on water and sewer costs. The other note is the graph down in the bottom right-hand corner, which it talks about median affordability. And it basically takes those water and sewer bills and compares it to the median household income of your community. And once again, you can see we're at 1.34%, which is on the lower end or the less orange end of that dial. Again, the lower, probably 10, 15% of those. So again, I just wanted to emphasize that even with the 2% rate hike this year, we have very affordable, very valuable resource in our, for our residents.
Are you, are you saying that some folks are paying $173 a month for?
$100. Where do you see that?
Um, where are the?
Oh, yes. Yeah, there is a maximum rate out there for 5,000 gallons. I can't tell you who that is, but it's within 50 miles. I don't know who that would be. It's not a good economic development tool, though. Any questions on that? Sort of kind of a complicated graph, but if you pull just a few numbers off, it's, it's interesting. Here's water resources spending by department. You can see the large expenditures are on the water plant, south waste treatment, east waste treatment, and the McIntosh Water Plant, along with debt. The next fund I want to briefly mention is the Stormwater Fund. We've been talking a lot about that lately. It's a $2.5 million budget, slightly over $2.5 million. This is funded by that $7 per month fee that's on every water and sewer bill. That's per account. This helps us comply with stormwater regulations. Helps reduce pollutants into our streams and ponds and lakes. And what we are improving with these funds is we're mapping our storm drainage system to aid in IDDE. IDDE is discharge, illicit discharge detection and elimination. Yeah, rolls off the tongue. Illicit dis-
Discharge.
Discharge.
Detection.
Detection.
Elimination.
Okay. Actually, I had that in parentheses, but I was trying to reduce the number of words. I guess I should have left it in there, but. And then a lot of public education and outreach are on the spending side, as well as, you see some capital outlay. You'll remember just this past month, some of the flooding that occurred in the city. This is what this budget's for, is to try to begin to eliminate that. Next is our Public Transportation Fund. It's also an enterprise fund. 76% of its revenues come from the federal government. And then 9% come from vehicle taxes. And the general fund transfers about $440,000 into this fund to help balance it. Most of your money this year is going, as usual, to operations, almost $2 million. And a big expenditure this year is fleet replacement. Lot of other funds. I just wanted to show them to you. You can control substance abuse, MPO transfer. I could go down through the Community Development Block Ramp Funds we dealt with earlier in the budget process. You know where that, those funds are going. Again, all of these funds total 5 million, 5 point, almost $5.8 million. So what you're considering tonight, after the public hearing, is appropriating $114 million for the 365 days between July 1 and June 30 of next year. Lot of, lot of services provided behind that. It's not just all revenue. It's all balance. Whatever comes in goes out, and it goes toward these services we've just mentioned. If you have any questions for me, council, I'll be happy to answer those. With that, I would turn it over to you, Mayor, for the public hearing portion of the night.
Couple of questions.
Couple of questions before we open the public hearing. One, just to maybe expand on it a little bit because I do hear questions asked fairly often when we talk about our public transit. And you look at our general fund when we talk about adopting a budget. And then we say this year, there's going to be, our biggest expense is going to be fleet replacement. But I think it's important to note that using federal monies, 5307 federal monies, that's a 10% match. Is that right, Noel?
It's 80% federal.
80/20? So 80% of that comes from the federal government. So just, we've done a really good job with our public transit at leveraging federal dollars. And it truly is a sort of a unique item to get your brain around the funding mechanisms of it, but I did want to point that out. And then the one question I have is, we're looking at 26% increase, I think you said, from sales tax, 18 million. There's a lot of unknowns in our economy. Do we, did we get guidance? Do we have guidance that that's a pretty good number?
Yeah, that 26% is not over what's actually come in this year. It's over what we budgeted. So you recall last year, I'm sure y'all were in the midst of still dealing with COVID, with still an uncertain economy. It's been uncertain ever since March of 2020. Ironically, sales taxes stayed strong through it all, but conservative, wisely conservative finance officers budget conservatively. So the 18.2 million that we budget is effectively, I think, is it 8% or over what we really think we're going to get in this year?
Basically what we're going to get in this year.
Okay. So even that projection is conservative. We're not projecting a lot of growth in sales tax. And if you read my budget message, some of the things we're concerned about, you and I have talked about quite a bit, are the potential for recession coming up, the possibility of, you know, gas prices, they say they're going to be over $5 this summer. Even in our budget, we probably only projected four a gallon, maybe a little more than that. Logistics issues, the war in Ukraine, there's just a lot of uncertainty out there. So I would say our sales tax projection is very conservative.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? So this is a public hearing. This is the budget for the city of Burlington. It's not just city council. So we'll open the floor to any comments from the public at this time. At this time, we'll ask if there's anyone on this side of the audience that would like to come forth and provide some public comments on our budget. Nobody, no takers? Is there anyone on this side that would like to come forth with public comments concerning the budget? David looks like he did a pretty good job.
No, I thought, I thought this was the first time in my 40-year career I had the biggest crowd here for a budget.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the budget.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? So the budget is carried forward. Thank you, thank you, David. Appreciate that. At this time, we'll go to new business as we remove item B from our consent agenda, a request by staff to authorize a contract between the city of Burlington and Wex Incorporated utilizing the Wex Fuel Card Program Policy for city fleet vehicles at Burlington Fire Department for a pilot program that may be expanded to all city departments. Do we have someone from staff that could come forward so we could maybe get a little explanation on what this request is?
Mayor, Council, thank you. The Wex Fuel Card Program is a state contracted program whereby we would contract with the state to get fuel from local convenience stores. What that allows to do is expand to 65 locations throughout the city of Burlington to allow our fire trucks to remain in their district for service reliability instead of traveling to the servicing to get fuel.
Jay, what provoked this? What, is this on the initiative of the state or were we having a problem with getting fueled or what made us go into this?
Good question. No, it was not provoked by anything. It was the intent to remain in service in our districts to provide service to our community is what started all. I've worked on this for several months and we're finally able to pull it all together to get it before council. With the rash of fires, the rescues, the fire fatalities, it just made sense for us to move to a setup like this to keep our units in service and available for calls. Station six is one station in particular that takes about 45 minutes for them to leave their station, get to the service center, get fuel, turn back around and get back in district. And that's, that's an extensive amount of time where they got several other options right there around them to allow them to stay in service.
Chief, do other municipalities utilize this service?
Yes, Greensboro, High Point, you know anybody else, Winston-Salem already use this service and have it in play.
How does this compare financially with what we would pay the fuel at our service center compared to the individual facility that you may go to? What, how does that, with the highway tax for retail fuel?
Yeah. Yeah.
So we only have one fueling site, so we really don't get a lot of deep discounts for what we purchase. So the fuel that we would purchase using these cards at other sites, we would give it basically about the same rate because we wouldn't pay the taxes. And Wex is a international procurement card program. They have really good deals with a lot of the big box stores, the Sheets, Sunoco, Exxon. They have these deep discounts with them that'll pass right along to us. So as far as how much we'll pay per gallon, it should be very close to what we're paying now.
I got to answer your question, Chief. One of those big fire trucks pull up at Sheets, how's that going to work with multiple cars backed up everywhere? I mean, is that a, I mean, it's an off-the-wall question I just got to ask you.
No, no, good question. Like I said, I was working with Andrew Short to identify these 65 locations. And what we've done since then is narrow that pool down to identify accessible locations that we can get into and out of fairly easily. So we've thought about that and we've ran through their thoughts and got that pretty much in a position where we know where we need to go.
And we all big fan of Sheets because they're a huge industry in our community, but just want to bring that up. But Wex opens up, you're not, you're not brand specific. Wex opens you up to a lot of locations that are not necessarily the same.
That's correct.
Yeah.
It's 65 locations in the city of Burlington.
So like headquarters, for example, would you go to Dunkin's for fill up?
No, it makes sense for headquarters continue to use Summit Avenue because that's in their district.
Okay.
Station five is a high industrial area. They can go right down to Maple Avenue. They have the Sheets that's right there and a couple other convenience stores right there within their district that makes sense for them to go to instead of traveling to Summit Avenue.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
One other comment I would like to add that Gary, he has been, worked at the city of Greensboro, I believe, and High Point, and they both use this program. And it was good for the local businesses. You know, they liked seeing the police cars or the fire trucks, the truck, any vehicles with the city of Burlington pulling up and fueling at their, at their businesses. And also because of cutting out the time, there were some cost savings in being able to go to someplace that's much closer.
Will still fuel opportunities to be available at the Public Works facility?
Yes, but I think that's something that we'll have to look at here in the near future. That site is 30 years old and to replace it would probably be pretty expensive. And that's why I was thankful that Chief Meven was, you know, willing to try this pilot program. If we can get it to work, I think it's something we may need to consider in the future. You know, do we really want to have a fuel site, you know, put that investment into a fuel site when we have access to stations all over the county?
I'm glad I asked.
Any other questions from council? This does come in the request, so at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, fellas. We appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Kathy. Next item is our public comment period. So at this time, we'll call on public comments for topics that are not on the agenda. Each speaker is asked to limit comments to five minutes. And we ask that when you approach the podium, you cite your, recite your name and address for the records. So we've got three requests tonight. Our first request is Doris Allen, Ms. Allenwood. Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon to the board. I'm here. My name is Doris Allen, and I live at 420 North St. John Street in Burlington, North Carolina. And the reason we here is because we having a developer in our neighborhood. And we opposed to having the street opened up. And if you would call, we have called the Burlington Police out at one point, not much. And they would say, well, we don't even know this location. We don't never get to come out here, and that's a good thing. And so that's why we opposing that a street will be cut from Church Street all the way to Apple Street. And that's our concern to not to have that opened up. And once, I think it was back in 1980, they was going to open it up, but they did. And so we're against it again and not wanting it to be opened up for our neighborhood. We have neighbors that have been there 50 years. We have neighbors that's been there 40 years. And we also have like maybe eight ladies that live there by theirself. So we're just trying not to get a lot of crime into our neighborhood.
Yep.
And that's my thing for tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Next, we have Mike Fawcett on new construction. Mr. Fawcett, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I'm a neighbor of Doris', and my family's been there for 50 years this month. And there's a lot of people behind me that have been there even before 1972. Several people here have been there before 1972. We do oppose this proposal. We live in a neighborhood that's quiet, it's peaceful, no crime. You can go down that street at nine o'clock at night, there's no lights on, it's that quiet. You can sit outside, you'll hear nothing but crickets, you know? And we've all lived there for a very long time. And there's about 23 houses on North St. John Street. If you've never been to North St. John Street and Crescent Avenue, you would not know that it existed. That's how quiet it is, and it's like a hidden secret in a sense. But there's about 23 houses on North St. John Street from Church Street to the end of North St. John where they propose to put this road in at. And out of those 23 houses, about 85% of the people have been there 30, 40 or 50 years. And we don't see a need to have another road cut through because there's already six roads from Apple Street that go straight to Church Street. You have Beaumont Avenue, about an eighth of a mile, you have Baldwin Road. About 1,000 feet, you have this new construction where they want to put a road through our neighborhood. Then about another 1,000 feet, you have Fulton Street. Another 1,000 feet, you have Richmond Avenue. And another 1,000 feet, you have Ireland Street. So it's not like there's no access to North Church Street from Apple Street. There's plenty of room and access. You know, if you compare the crime statistics from our little community to the crime along Apple Street, it would be like night and day because we have none. Everybody's been there for so many years, and we want to keep it that way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fawcett, could you state your address for the record?
361 North St. John Street.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And next, we have Tim Jeffers. Mr. Jeffers, welcome, Mr. Jeffers.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Timothy Jeffers. I reside at 428 Crescent Avenue. And as my neighbors have voiced their concern earlier, I too want to do the same. There's a new construction that's in the area, and we've been getting mixed signals about what's happening with that construction. We were, we talked to the developer who was a local pastor. There were some things that he told us that we found out tonight that is not true. We were told that no road was being opened from North St. John all the way through Apple Street as that is one of our major concerns. As Mike said earlier, there's probably eight to 10 people here tonight that have been in that community for 50 years. They walk the neighborhood, you know, everybody knows everybody. I have a dog, and if my dog gets out, any one of the neighbors can say, you better go back home, and the dog goes home. I mean, that's how tight our community is there. We're not opposed to development as the budget was passed tonight. We understand taxes for property. But we was also told by the developer that there will be no apartments that they were going to build between 12 to 17 homes. My view and the consensus of people here is a person renting does not have the same values that a person that owns a home. So as we said earlier, we, we have no crime in our community because everybody there is homeowners. But we know that if people that rent, they can just pick up and go rent somewhere else. So they don't care, you know, about property values. They don't, you know, care what goes on. Around the corner, we have a 75-unit construction that has just been completed. With that construction, there was no new road changes or anything. So, you know, I'm a little perplexed because I was given a map when I got here tonight that it was already approved in six of 21. So this being public comments, I'm not sure if we can do anything about the construction that is going now. But we did want to voice that we do not want a road cut from North St. John all the way through Apple Street. We do not want the apartments, we're, again, we're not opposed to new residential homes in the area, but we adamantly oppose apartments being there. As we speak, North St. John, who, I guess the people that live in the community travel there daily, and that road needs paving right now. So if that road is opened up, that road is going to stay. Potholes and so forth, and they patched it at one point, but right now, if any one of you, and I advise you, any one of you all to ride down North St. John, and I think if you all lived in that property, y'all would make a fuss about that road needs to be paved as we currently speak. So again, to reiterate, we do not want a road to be opened up from North St. John all the way through Apple Street, and we oppose the apartments being built there. And again, we have met with the, the local pastor who is completing this project, and he's told us one thing. I know for a fact that he used to be on the zoning or rezoning committee, so he knows how things work down here at the city. We don't. So we come here to voice our concern. We would like at some point to be, have a meeting with the powers that be that we can discuss this, you know, further. Everybody probably won't show up at the meeting, but this group came here tonight to let city council know how we feel about that area. And again, in closing, there is at least 10 people, I'm 55 years old. I know I look good. There's at least 10 people, there's at least 10 people here that has lived in that area for over 50 years.
Excuse me. What did you say?
I look good. I didn't stop. I didn't stop. Thank you. Thank you all for hearing us, and at some point, we would like a meeting with the powers-to-be so that we could voice our concerns even further.
Thank you. I appreciate all three and you articulating your concerns. And just, just for our benefit, how many people tonight? Just raise your hand if you're here on this subject. Thank you. I just wanted to sort of get a visual of that. Kind of to your point, this is not a rezoning matter. It's not a matter that has to come before council for approval. So the normal process, if property is zoned for the intended use of the developer, the developer works with city staff on, in our technical review committee on site plans, and they meet our unified development ordinance, our code of ordinances that are allowable in that particular area. But I think it's important to this council, and it's certainly important to staff, I know our staff well enough to know that if there's some discontent, we would like to maybe take that to the developer. Jamie or Nolan, would you sort of tell us what that process would look like if we went to a developer? The developer has vested rights.
He does, Mr. Mayor. He's got a site-specific plan that has already, of course, completed the process and been approved. And under the North County General Statute 162-801, he does have vested rights to complete his project. But that doesn't mean that staff can't have the opportunity to turn around and have a consultation with him in light of the concern of the neighbors and see if he's willing to do something voluntarily.
So in short, if he's got an approved site plan by city staff, if he did by his own will, by his own choice, present a different site plan that may be more conducive to what the community wants than staff work with him on a new site plan? Is that, I don't know.
I have my, Mr. Trump said, the best right to do what he's been approved on site plan, he can submit a revised site plan. So we'd be glad to try to engage in this, in the face of our great zones and communication on this and see if he's open to, you know, other ideas for his site that he can move forward with the site plan he has prepared.
We were told several things, I didn't want to list all those here, but we were told that they may have a guard down with a gate that comes up in the middle of where the current road ends to go through the new road, which we know that's not going to happen. So in light of us trying to talk with the developer and some things that he said didn't happen is one of the main reasons why we came here to voice our concern tonight. Again, we're not opposed to new construction, but we were pretty adamant about a road going all the way through as well as the apartments.
Tim, is your conversation been with the pastor?
Yes. The main, Doris Allen, Doris Allen has been there for probably 25, 30 years where the road ends currently on the left side. And Mr. Galen Brown lives on the right side, and he's been there 50-plus years. And Mr., I can't remember my uncle's name. Alvin, I call him Alvin Jones. Alvin and Doris live right beside of Galen, and they've been there 50-something years. Mr. Douglas Moore has been there over 50-something years. And Ms. Barbara Jones has been there over 50-something years, all on St. John. Mike Fawcett, his family has been there over 50-something years. So it is a well-tight knit community. Everybody knows everybody there, and everybody looks out for the safety of everybody there. And, you know, again, we would like to keep it that way.
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Moore had his hand up. He wanted to speak as well.
Sure.
Mr. Moore's on.
Doug. I'm not a stranger here. I've been here a long time. I look up here, I see a whole lot of the guys up here there. You'd give me a problem, but I still take care of it because I've been coaching and working with kids and all, and stayed in the community over there for a long time. And the kids over there, I used to coach back there in the streets where it was nice. Put a field goal up out there, a basketball goal up at the, and coached them. And now they trying to do something else to bring some more traffic down through there, which we don't need. Because I walked through the neighborhood a whole lot of times, and I see kids out in the yard playing, which bringing a whole lot of traffic down through there would be horrible. And I talked to some of my neighbors and my friends and all there, and I know them, and they, they know me, and we all agree on the same thing. We don't need that road to go all the way through there. Because if we do, then some of the kids that be out in the yard playing there, their life would be in danger. Because cars be coming down through there, and we don't need that because it's been quiet and peaceful over there. I've been over there a long time. But now we need to do something to help out with the people around to keep it quiet and peaceful over there. It's something we just don't need. And just like I can look around here and there and see people that I know, and they know me, and they know that I'm what's right. Is that right?
That's right.
Is that right? I coached for the city for a long time, and they did, they worked out with me. They give me a break because back then, I used to go pick the kids up on the back of my truck, curb the practice, bring it back home, stop sometime and feed them. But I've been working good with the kids over there. But running that road down through there, some of those kids will have to, I don't know. But I've been putting a God in their hand. I've been praying for it. To God be the glory.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question, please?
Sure.
So what you're saying is, I think, they might have missed, somebody missed it, that this developer is not willing to make any changes, there's pretty much nothing we can do. Is that what it boils down to?
By ordinance, yes. In long and to short, it did not require council action to approve that project. It was allowable by our land use plan and what it was zoned for in the first place. And the developer has a vested right to move forward with his project. But that doesn't negate the fact that city staff has the ability to communicate with the developer because there's, there's phases along the way that the developer is required to communicate with staff on. And we can certainly share any concerns that the community may have, and it's our hope, our goal, our ambition that the developer would take heed to those.
Right. But he does, but he can go forward with his road if he chooses to.
Absolutely.
And we don't think that he would change his mind. But we've talked to him at the church, and I'm not going to be negative toward anybody, but his attitude is that his mind is set toward one goal, and we don't, I don't think, if there's nothing we can do legally or by group or change someone's mind, if there's nothing we can do, and he has the right to do it, I don't, we don't think he'll change his mind. And it's just very doubtful that he will.
Yeah. Unfortunately for council, there's no action that we could take that could give you immediate relief. But we're still hopeful that if staff can communicate with the developer, then maybe we can come to some understanding and at least find some areas of compromise. That would be our goal.
That would be, that would be our hope, yes.
When we stated that one of the main issues was the road going all the way through, he did suggest speed bumps. We don't want speed bumps in our three-year, we've been there forever in a week in a speed bump. And as I said before, if, I actually would like for any one of you all to ride to North St. John tomorrow and tell me if you do not think that road needs paving currently.
Well, Mr. Jeffers, just for record, I've got some potholes on my street, and I did ask city staff.
And I bet they get fixed.
And they told me I was way down on the.
You'll make me Google your address.
I will tell you this. I live on the same street as council member Wall.
And I know.
When he was mayor, he got paid up to his house, but he didn't make it there.
And if potholes on his street, they might get some dust on his dresser. We know that tonight.
Just for the record, this young man played for me many years ago when I was coaching, so let's get that out.
And Mr. Harold Owens hired me as my first summer job.
Yeah, Mayor, council. So North St. John's, realistically, and I'm going off the top of my head here, it's probably about two years out from being resurfaced. And one of the reasons that it is, is so it is on, there's a portion of North St. John that is on next year's, what we call our two-inch water replacements, which we've replaced older water lines, and some of them are very small. Some of them actually aren't two inches, they may be four inches, but they're the old galvanized pipe or different pipes. So there's a section of North St. John's that is scheduled for next year's water replacement. And so we kind of coordinate, so some streets may actually be a little higher on the list to be resurfaced, but we don't want to resurface them and then come back through the very next year and tear the street up into a water line replacement. So we're kind of working in conjunction with that. So next year, next fiscal year, they'll see some water lines being replaced on North St. John's. And typically, we would follow up that replacement project with a resurfacing project. So I know that that list is coming. Not to say that we're not kicking it down the road, but we are kicking it down the road for a very specific reason.
Right. And we do have a scoring system for our street resurfacing, so it's truly done on a scoring system. This council, as a matter of fact, this council a couple of months ago added $3 million to our street repaving budget for current fiscal year, and then we've got money already built in for, in this budget, and we discussed tonight for next fiscal year. But I wanted to tell everybody here how much we appreciate your feedback and your comments. I wish there was some action that we could take immediately that could address your concerns. But, and to help city staff, Mr. Jeffers, would it be all right if you were a point of contact for city staff if we need questions or clarifications on some things? Because there's a lot of people here that, you know, if we could narrow it down.
Sure, sure. I have a pretty busy schedule. Doris Allen.
Doris, we just need one.
She don't mind me in contact, she could get it.
Okay, that's fair enough. I just want city staff to have someone that they could go to if there are any questions or if they need to clarify something, and we've got your contact information. But if you'll stick, stick around right after the meeting, we'll be sure we've got what we need. Is that fair, Nolan? Yep.
I think Jeffers already has a couple of our contact information anyway. Don't you notice he backed up when we asked him?
I did have a former mayor, Wall, on my feed now. I don't play, I don't play.
You said you were real busy at work. Is that what you said?
I work with that Alvin, would you talk to him?
Ms. Allen? I think you need to speak with him after this meeting.
I will. I will.
All right. At this time, we'll transition from our public comment to city council comments. Any city council comment?
I noticed that Heidi was here in the audience. Where do we stand with that house on Front Street that has burned? Does anybody know anything about that?
Yes. I have to answer some questions pertaining to that. So the property owners, the mayes, have filed for a demolition permit, not demolition permit, an application in front of the HPC to demolish the structure. So that will be heard actually tomorrow night, HPC meeting tomorrow night. And then subsequent to that, assuming, you know, that's approved and not delayed, which I don't see that should be, they can go ahead and then file for a demolition permit to go ahead and proceed. So things aren't moving forward with that property?
Thank you.
Heidi, I mean, Jamie, what, when this is demolished, then what's next for that piece of property in terms of reconstruction?
They would essentially have to keep the property unless something is built on the property, and they would have to go through the proper process for that, being in the local historic district and following the protocols. But they would just have to, you know, recede the property and, I think in saw grass, make sure that it's not just open dirt on the property. But at this point, there's no application that's pending for new construction. It would be a vacant piece of property in the district.
It would look a lot better as a vacant property versus that, but thank you. Second thing, Mr. Mayor, is I wanted to congratulate Chief Meven. He was a speaker at our high school graduation at the Burlington School and did a great job. Very, very proud of his speech, and congratulations.
You stole some of my words. I wrote it for you.
You did?
Yeah.
I could tell. He said something about me being strict and rude and all that, so I figured it came from someone other than him.
That was it. That was his addition.
Yeah, okay, got you.
Any other council comments? I do have two. One is on behalf of council, to city staff, we want to tell you how much we appreciate the hard-working effort that goes into putting forth a budget, and it does not go unnoticed, and the amount of data and details and what you provide, council, is greatly appreciated. And I know there's a large group of people that does this together, but Peggy will give you all credit, so.
It's a team effort.
It is very much a team effort. And really, we just want to thank everyone for making it easy to understand, digest, and refer to, and everybody's always available, we know, if we have questions, and that makes it a lot easier. And then the last item I have is we do have a link transit event. June 6th marked our sixth anniversary of link transit within Burlington, Gibsonville, Alamance County, and Alamance Community College. So to date, link transit has provided 512,188 trips since beginning operations on June 6th of 2016. So as a celebration, our link transit staff will be at the Transit Hub on 504 South Worth Street on June 13th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. And staff will be handing out free link transit giveaways. Staff will also be available to talk with patrons about link transit and link paratransit services and operations. And we do invite all folks to attend this event on June 13th from 9:00 to 11:30 and celebrate it with us. And in addition, just as a side note, and it's not, we've not completed with it yet, but I do want to thank staff, Nolan, Mike, Nolan, and our staff on working with downtown and the sock puppets to possibly have some link transit routes on weekends between downtown and Burlington Athletic Stadium. So we, it's difficult to do it for every game, but we're trying to focus on that for the weekend period and maybe start something. It'll be an experiment. We hope it works, but just to see if we can get any interest in that. So that takes a little bit of effort. It's not as easy as it sounds to just let's start running this route because we contract those services. So we got to work with our contract staff and obviously be sure with our labor shortage that we're all facing, that we've got drivers that can do this. So it looks like we've got a plan to pull it together. So Nolan and your team, thanks for working on that. We appreciate that. Any other comments? At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Meeting is.